Before we officially get started, we are very much aware of the governor's mandate of mask wearing. If any of you, I know Dr. Smith had mentioned it earlier, if any of you feel very uncomfortable with us not wearing a mask, we will do it. The dilemma we have is muffled. So for Seal to get the minutes, it is very hard for her to get the minutes from the recorder with the mask on. But we also want to be extremely respectful of you.
It helps read your lips because I can't hear you.
Okay, all right. I appreciate that. And for those of you two that are going to be speaking, if you don't mind, I'm not asking you to take your mask off, but if you could speak up, be very positive of this. We've got the fan going and it's hard to hear. So if we don't hear, if somebody doesn't hear what somebody is saying, please ask folks to speak up. We've got about a minute and we'll be starting before we move on. Okay, five o'clock. Scan please to put on your seat. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God, in beautiful republican justice for all. So the first order of business is to have a public hearing. It is for the purpose of accepting the New Hampshire Highway Safety Grants, grants totaling $16,006. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 31:95B. And I won't get into all of the numbers or whatever the breakdown, but I will quickly go down and share with you what is involved in that $16,006. Speed enforcement controls, DUI enforcement, distracted driving, pedestrian. And if you want more information specific to each one, just let me know. Distracted driving, pedestrian, bicycle, join the New Hampshire clique, drive sober or get pulled over. You drive, you text, you pay. E-crash equipment, MDT, e-crash equipment, printers, scanners, receivers. And I think that is, that total is $16,006. There is a minimum match required of $4,001.50. So we'll open it up for, start with the select board. Any questions, comments? We will leave this open for 15 minutes and then we'll close it out and we'll have a motion if so desired. Any public comments, questions? Chief, we just started the public hearing on the grant board. Do you want to share? Don't need to put John's phone on.
So the hearing is for our highway safety monies that we get every year. This year, the grant flow is $16,006. This is reimbursement for traffic enforcement details such as video DWI saturation controls, quicker ticket. We also do compliance checks for cell phones for distracted driver. So these monies are targeted eighteen times when we go out and we patrol and the state reimburses us for them. Any other questions on that?
Any questions from the public? Comments, questions? So we will leave this open for now 12 minutes. Leave it open for 12 minutes and then we'll close it out with a potential motion. So we will continue on with the agenda. The next, I did not see Tim Egan, Representative Egan, okay, he is here. Representative Egan is going to be sharing with us some initiatives that he has and Tim, the floor is yours.
Any place to present? Usually I present for a board.
That's okay.
Hi, I'm Tim Egan. Actually, we're crafting two state grant for Sherwoodville, Franktonia, Lisbon, Lyman, Monroe. So the reason why I came to brief you is now in my second term, through my first term, I realized there was a wide variety of residents that are in, my constituents that are actually business owners in Littleton. So I want to make sure that you do as well. If I represent them, I feel like I represent Littleton. So if you do have issues, problems, I work closely with little Maximila. I've reached out to Pat Simi, Joe Palmer, reps to work with them as well. But part of the reason that I'm here is, last session we passed bipartisan legislation called Communications District, which was signed by the governor. Communications District allows for small towns that are underserved or non-served by cable companies or telecom companies to go out on their own and create a telecom company. Best example I'd give you is like a version of Republicans in Power and Light. You can create your own Roy Country Telecom. And initially, four years ago, a bill was passed that allowed a singular town to go to town. Problem is that the towns that are so small can't afford to do that on their own. Easton couldn't do that. Land Ave couldn't do that. So the Communications District bill was passed. I supported it in the House, it came out of the Senate, and the governor signed it as part of some of the muscle legislation at the end of the year. Stuff was grouped together because of the COVID situation. So we're now going to try and put that into practice. And the reason why I'm here is to let you know that I'm briefing towns in and around the district because it's not just Craftin' Two which this applies to. Basically, the logic is trying to improve the cellular and broadband service from more or less from Lancaster, Whitefield, all the way through here. As we all know, it's just a stressful time to deal with phone and internet, let alone have a pandemic and let alone have a bunch of other issues like public safety issues, like the unfortunate horse cycle accident number two, or the key aspects that make it difficult for small business owners, homeowners, developers to create viable properties or viable businesses. So the Communications District will allow towns to participate in a bond that would be shared. The towns would be the shared responsibility. Right now, there are three tri-ta, two tri, excuse me, two tri-towns interested and committed. Easton, Franktonia, Sugar Hill, Lisbon, Lyman, Land Ave, as well as Bethelham. It's on to share this with your board so that you can make a decision. Because while you may have spectrum down on Main Street and may thickly settle in, because I know the rural parts of Littleton, there's still lack of service. So the idea here is to work with the two major cable providers, Spectrum and Comcast, because they've already built the infrastructure. And instead of creating a brand-new company or organization, we can use their intellectual capital that they already have, the research that they already have, and some of the existing infrastructure that they already have. If any of you read in the last 24, 48 hours, that New Hampshire actually received $25 to $40 million in what they call RDO funds, rural digital opportunity funds, that come from when the FCC sold off some of the television spectrum. I remember about 15 years ago, we all were getting the TVs. They sold off some of the spectrums and they created PRG. And that money was earmarked specifically for rural broadband development. Another benefit of being in New Hampshire is the keepers of that committee is Senator Maggie Asse. So I've been tracking that as well as three other initiatives that are looking towards contributing to an effort to build up broadband. So it won't just be the taxpayers having to build an infrastructure and hope that they have customers that can then come and pay off the bond. I spoke with the New Hampshire Business Finance Authority. They actually support building out a bond and they actually can insure them so that if a bond may cost a little more, ensures that if something does go bad, the taxpayers don't get left on the hook. More importantly, there are three other interested entities. You'd be surprised to know that a majority of farm equipment is now repaired by someone coming in, plugging their laptop into the piece of equipment, downloading software to upgrade the gear. And that doesn't happen if you don't have broadband or internet. So you have to put your tractor or your baler or whatever up on a trailer, take it out of the field, and now you're losing business. And if it happens at crop time, it could be like a death for business. So the New Hampshire Farm Bureau is interested to participate. They actually have a Farm Bureau Innovation Fund specifically with money towards broadband. The Northern Orleans Regional Commission has five key priorities. The top two involve broadband and telecom infrastructure. I spoke with their executive director, somebody you may know, Howard Parker, who has this office here, where he works for Palmer's and they are very interested to match any of the funds. RDO, which is part of the federal government funding, they are required to have local partners and Spectrum is one of the authorized partners. So I mean that this funding actually is getting earmarked from New Hampshire and that we can actually have a vendor that could accept it. And the last one is, I've been talking with a variety of the healthcare foundations because telecom, telescology, telemedicine is a key aspect of not only how to provide healthcare to a rural community, especially during the pandemic, but a senior community that drive into a dark myth or conquer or anything that needs more major work than you can get at MRH is going to be an important aspect. I have had confirmation from them, yes, I can't publicly disclose who those are, but there are 63 major healthcare providers in the state. I'm talking with all them through DIA, the Business and Industry Association. So really, that's what I came to brief you on, is that this effort is going on. As I have more material, I'll share it with you at the end of the day. As you would expect, nothing's handed out without an ask and return. I'll be asking the towns to put out a warrant article to allow the creation of a bonding agency. I've talked with a couple of the local banks. Again, they haven't confirmed their participation, so I can't reference them. There are basically three or four major ones. I've spoken with three of the four. They would be the bond buyers. So what I'm trying to do is line up that if a bond was created, there's a buyer for it, that is a local provider that will have the ready capital to use, and then the bond will be paid off from these granting agencies that are focused on reimbursing broadband development. So the goal would be, just to pick a random number. If the bond was 10, and we bound three or four organizations that wanted to contribute, five or six, at the end of the day, what the bond will cost the community is four or five. So the idea is then by creating that entity, going out and building out a customer base, that's what would pay the bond out at the time. So that's what's called the Communications District. I'm in the midst of building it from a legal capacity now. The key aspect is towns that want to participate, like have to pass a warrant article that they want to participate in it. There's no commitment other than when we see the numbers, then we'll make a decision. But it would just be an agreement to participate so that when the legal entity is built, it's referencing the towns as its owner and those towns that committed would be that ownership. Trying to keep within your 10 minutes and your asked me to. The last aspect is that this is something that's got a variety of support from different organizations on the finance side, organizations on the telecom side. So I think it's important that this is not something that's going to be created on its own. The research, the data, the infrastructure, a lot of these things somewhat exist, so there's no reason to recreate the wheel. It's really how we maximize the wheel on the wagon and turn it into a wheel on an 18-wheel. Questions, comments?
Thank you.
Sorry, appreciate your time. And like I said, as well, with the variety of constituents that are business owners in town, any of the town issues, also let your town administrator know that I'm available for who has issues. Because as much as we're all separate towns, obviously, the little economic infrastructure around this region is tight-knit. That's whatever I can do about it. If you are easy to find, if you go to the general court site, under my name or number, Craftin' Two, it has my cell phone, it has my email, always accessible. So if you have questions as it relates to upcoming legislation, let me know. And I will, at times, if you're okay, I've done this with towns in my district. But there are some times when bills that I put them out and before I make a decision on how I want to vote on them, I want to get impact, big vote. So I may ask for all of you, can I run these couple by you? And I've done that with all the five towns in Craftin' Two, but it's important now that I live in Littleton and sometimes not the one.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there a paper on that you could drop on so we could just hold it?
The Communications District?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're building out a plan now. Literally, it's happening. Technically, I wanted to see, you know, what's supposed to be. Building it in September, October. We got to wait for November to make sure I was rotating. Because I would have done it anyway, but it would have been a lot easier if I'm in the House to work with other representatives to push some of these state agencies that don't support. And so the people in Craftin' Two decided, doing the job and that. So I'm trying to move this little factor. So yeah, once I have that, there will actually be sort of a, I don't know if a business plan, but an outline of what the Communications District would look like, who would participate in it, what would be sort of the cost structures and implementation. And more importantly, I think for everybody that's interested, timeline of how would this stuff capable hold out and what would be included in that. Very much to share with all boards, all select boards on that.
Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you very much. We look forward to the update. The 15 minutes is up so we can close out the, or open it up. Is there any further questions with the grants? Chief Smith had shared more about it. If there are further questions, you'd be happy to answer them. Again, we're looking at accepting the New Hampshire Highway Safety Grants totaling $16,006. Any other questions, comments? If not, then I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept the New Hampshire Highway Safety Grants totaling $16,006. Was it accept and expend?
Accept and spend, yeah.
So accept and expend the New Hampshire Highway Safety Grants totaling $16,006. One second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Great. So the next on the agenda, actually, before we get to this, I, we as a select board always want to hear from our departments, especially when they get thank you notes or accolades. So a couple did come in with Littleton Fire and Rescue. And we just want to publicly thank them for their service, but to also convey what folks are writing in thanking the officials that we have here in town. So this one says, Littleton Fire and Rescue. Thank you for your expeditious response to our 911 call and your excellent and professional care. Our best, because it's redacted. Littleton, New Hampshire. Another one is, thank you all for your quick response to calls for help with our, and it's redacted. Although we lost his battle with addiction, he won victory in peace. Your service is much needed and appreciated. Sincerely, and it's redacted. But we always want to take those opportunities to thank our high service, the least service. And so we have encouraged the different departments to give us thank you notes and accolades. The, so next on the, the town manager's report will be deferred until further notice. So we will not go without. What we do have under new business, old business, none. Under new business is the RFP, the sale of the Eaton property. And tonight, sharing on that is Franco. And Franco is a former selector. So Franco, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Not a couple hours ago that I was actually presenting something here because I didn't know Andrew wasn't going to be here. We were, I as and other members were asked to be part of an advisory group to Andrew on that RFP before we came to the board recommendations. That advisory group is made up of Stan Fillion, Diane Cummings, Steve Niles, and Skyler Sweet. I'm not sure what you want from us, but I can just share with you the email I sent to him that our group, we met, reviewed the three proposals that were already received, and came to our conclusion to what I would, our suggestion to Andrew was. Do you want me to just read that or do you want me to review?
Well, I think, should we have him read it? Stan or?
It was a brief email. I can read what I sent him.
All right, all right.
Okay, pursuant to your request, we reviewed the responses to the request for proposals dated November 24, 2020, entitled beneficially impurposed in development map 6828 Eaton Plaza. As the opinion of the advisory members, that the conceptualized acquisition and development defined in the proposal submitted by Jonathan Bombachi and Douglas Maturio Esquire is the best submission. That's actually recommend that you, with the Board of Select's approval, pursue an agreement with Bombachi and Maturio with the following caveat. Number one, we reviewed the submission as a concept, not a final plan. There are significant details that we do not believe can be defined at this time, but should be to the extent possible before proceeding with any final agreement. For example, number units, target market, impact on utilities, schools, emergency response, public access, and by no means limited to that. I'm sure you can cover much more than that. Number two, due diligence is performed in respect to the financial viability of proposals and their experience and track record as they relate to the specific target market. And number three, the proceeds of the sale or portion thereof will be used to hire a professional oversight of the ongoing development of the project. That's it. I just would like to stress that we really look at this as a concept. By no means are any of the proposals looked at as this is the final plan that should be set forward. We really think it's a selector's responsibility or probably to pursue and work out the details of what we think is the best business of the year.
I think, I think this is definitely a hot topic. And it's worth, I'm very thankful that we can do this publicly. You know, obviously, right from the beginning. And I have to be careful too. So I can maybe talk about the process, but I cannot talk about the RFPs because my brother has submitted one of the RFPs. So I will have to recuse myself from the actual RFPs. But as far as the process goes, we, it was aggressive. The process was aggressive. We gave the, those that wanted to do an RFP, we gave them about two days. And the RFP itself was pretty hefty. So I can speak to that, but I am not going to, I will recuse myself on the rest of that.
I guess I would, I don't know about the timing of that, how difficult, what the timing limitations would be. But I will say that I was asked to be one of the advisors at nine o'clock in the morning on Friday. And I had the documents to look at at 9:30. And we had a meeting too. So yeah, it was fast. And that's why I think it's important to note that this is just a concept. It's not planned by any stretch of the line.
I guess my thought is too, we would maybe take some more time. We've owned the, the town has owned the property a little for 20 years. And you know, it's tossed around some other ideas. And I just feel that pushing this through, I don't know. That's just my, I'm just one voice, but.
At the last select board meeting, we sat down and talked about it. We thought we needed a little bit more time for a little more research on what was going on. We thought, you know, maybe just be pushed a little fast. And I didn't realize it was going to go as quick as it did, as fast as it did, because there's no communication to us.
So was the select board aware that the RFP went out?
Yeah, that we voted on.
Right, we voted that to go out. But we also voted to retract it. We didn't believe, you know, realize that the bids were going to come in so quick and they were going to be opened and a decision made. At the last board meeting, I recommended that it was back to a warrant article because that's how the property was bought. And I still believe that that's the proper way to let the people decide what's going to go on with this Eaton. It was up to them to buy it. It should be up to them. What happens? Yeah, I don't know what the plan is or was. I was just asked to review the proposals. My understanding was that it was going to some sort of warrant article. I have no idea. Not involved.
I do believe that it was our impression that it was going to go back to the select board for further consideration. And also that whatever the, if the select were decided to move forward, it would go to the people in a warrant article. That was my understanding. Was that your impression?
Yeah, it was. But I'm hearing, I don't really, I'm not plugged in enough to know what happened last meeting and what was decided. That was, that was our assumption when we were reviewing it, but we don't, we don't set the agenda.
Right. And I think we all had that meeting and decided that there was quite a bit that still needed to be considered. And by no means, the things that we had received had all the answers in them. And we were grateful that we could pass on to, back to the select board.
Yeah, I guess, you know, in looking at the RFP too, some of the things that were asked of the potential bidders, some of them could take up to six months to determine. And we were asking them to make a commitment money-wise, time-wise. And it just, it just seemed like it was just way too aggressive. And Roger brings up a good point too, that it was us as taxpayers that purchased it. And I think we as taxpayers are the ones to say we can sell it. I mean, that, and again, I know I'm just one voice, or determine what, I know we've got some conservation people here too in the room. Is it, I know our heart is that could we build or could we have more housing? Would that be the most logical place? Would it increase the tax revenues? More than likely. But is that the only alternative?
Can the sewer system support it?
Can the system support it?
Sewer system.
Of the sewer system?
Pressure?
That would be a question.
Structure stuff?
That's a good question.
I think those were all questions that came up when we were talking about it. And again, that's why it's really a concept. And then again, that's why it's really a concept. I mean, those things have to be answered if we can do anything for sure. But I'm not sure that necessarily has to hold up the idea of, of, you know, the, the concept or, and a negotiation or something like that. I do recall being, uh, pointed directly at, uh, the last deliver session saying, uh, and being quoted that, uh, what are we going to do with the property? When I, when I was a selectman, I made the comment that I want, we, we should, we should chew on it for a while. And that was thrown right back at me at the later session. There is an appetite in, in the town for, to get that back on the tax rolls. There's no question about it. And I, I don't think, again, the solution, the, the proposal that, uh, that the, the group advisors, that's all I know how to call them because we're certainly on a committee, uh, the, the group, that proposal conceptually made sense. It makes use to save land for, for trade holes and things like that. That's the only reason we as, as advisors threw that one forward because it was really the best solution that we felt from a conceptual standpoint for the community. And that's it, how fast it goes, how slow it goes, nothing. I just want to remind you that you've been, that's been a topic of discussion as we've known for a long time. And, uh, I personally was, was, uh, was called on not doing anything about it when I was a selectman.
Well, that's why after twenty-five years or whatever, it's time to, you know, make a plan on what we want to do rather than have it just sit there.
Exactly.
But we don't want to throw it out in just a couple of weeks. You know, we'd like to at least get some input from the people and find out what they want to do with it and, um, go from there. Because it's not going to work for what we originally purchased it for. So rather than, you know, kick ourselves in ten years ago, oh, we had that property and we could have done this with it. Thought that it wants to take ten years to do it, but it was time to think about what's the proper thing for that piece of property.
I came to a meeting that this group in turn learned more about what was going on. I don't know what is going on. And when it comes to a meeting and we're discussing what you people are talking about doing and making decisions, the rest of us out here should have the ability to be able to know what is going on, no fault of the committee. But they haven't had much time to be able to go and do it. But the, the people that are in this room should have an opportunity of being able to understand and have all of it. Not just a portion of it going to this committee. We should have the ability of having all of it, no matter what happens. Uh, as far as that part too. Now, you mentioned the word housing. I don't have any idea if that's what they're talking about or not. Sorry. Did a little bit of work on some of the things in the town. In two thousand and nine, we had eight houses in Littleton, not ours. In two thousand and ten, and this doesn't mean that they were in a development and it doesn't mean they were having to have been out of town. Two thousand and ten, there's five houses. Two thousand and eleven, three houses. Two thousand and twelve, there were ten. Two thousand and thirteen, what date? Two thousand and fourteen, there were four. Two thousand and fifteen, there were four. Two thousand and sixteen, there was six. And some of these houses were torn down or reconstructed or something like this in the old building. They put it outside of the town. Two thousand and seventeen, there were eight. Two thousand and eighteen, there were seven. And two thousand and nineteen, there were nine. It's not been a huge amount of housing constructed from that. The town of Littleton in turn has a, uh, lot of lots. I talked to you the other day, uh, the, the region. The town of Littleton has an awful lot of building blocks that now are here, of course, the state. The state Rogers train, he bought, uh, he bought property from Gordon Beadsworth, who was a local person who was a surveyor, big surveyor, uh, down in Massachusetts. And he and Dan Ellings bought property in there. And it's still forty house lots, they said approximately. And I got this from Scotty Foxon, I went and looked at the maps in the town today. And it's approximately forty house lots. This is up by Sweetwood Inn, going up in that particular area. Greenwood property in turn, after talking to Scott Foxon, he said that they have approximately, if you had built roads and what they have planned might have been as much as fifty house lots available with water and with earth. The next one was Robert Foxon and David Thorf. They have twelve lots, the, uh, right behind the town garage. The, uh, Brimstone Parish has approximately eleven lots on Mount East Street. I have two or three, my wife and I have two or three lots. Sean Lodge has a couple. Arrow Corbett has seven. The Presby's have a bunch. The, uh, Mr. Lynn in turn has seven in two different places, inspiring lots of it. So there are considerable availability of lots of concern. Now, the town of Littleton in turn, one geographically, it's not laid out very well. We're right next to Bethlehem and it's a side hill and they don't have much water pressure from the point of getting out too. This plan that you're talking about doesn't have water pressure to be left. If zone higher one, on that particular piece, I don't know whether you knew that or not. But if zone higher one, which is residential one pertaining to what it would be as far as the development is concerned. But they keep your water pressure over there, it's too hot as far as the town is concerned. So I personally look at it as, uh, there are lots available for people to be able to acquire, purchase. Like the Osmond property I did, some upon, I call it Fuel Southern property up on Pleasant Street. So there's availability, but in my lifetime, the increase in population here has never brought much. We had, we used to have about fifty-five hundred people when I was born and around that area. You've got plus six thousand now, you've got five hundred people additional people. So we haven't had a major growth factor to what there was as far as the availability of the, of the two. Now, so I, I did some other inquiry on the particular piece of land up here when it was acquired. When it was acquired by the town and voted on to purchase it, they went in after that and they hired a logger, brought in water. Okay? He built a bunch of roads up in there. Now, the roads that are in it in turn go up to another piece of property that the town owns, which is called Pest House property. There's no agreement in your articles whatsoever to put in right of ways to retain access to the other properties. The other thing is if you should have a list of all the flooding, people who are around it should be applied to let everybody know who is around it and what it is too, as far as that. My own opinion is that it's not a good thing for the selectmen to make a decision on buying or selling a piece of property. You may have the rights to do, but who says the next time you're going to be selling your own property? Or they get somebody else in here, they get anything that the town has. It could be the Aptar Common, it could be the Dells. It's not a good particular process that I think is something that you people should enter into no matter what.
Well, Bruce, I think.
If you're, if you're going to do it, you should in turn go back to the town of what you had said before. And it should be petitioned after you get enough information about it so that the people could understand what they're making the decision on.
Well, I think that's the, that's what we're sharing tonight.
Okay, but you don't have it, you don't have it. I mean, what he's had faced with is he's had to, for a little time to be able to study it.
Well, and, and that's, that's a fact. And we also want to make sure, um, you know, we just spent some money on a master plan that we as voters decided to, uh, have this done, the, the town's master plan. And we want to make sure that whatever we do dovetails and it goes along with this. So whether or not.
Let me finish before I come up. Also, when the logger in turn, when they're logging off out of it from that town, they also, that used to be a field there, it's water fields. And consequently, they took a bunch of the loan. There's probably at least over fifty or sixty or even seventy thousand dollars worth of loan on that property. Okay? And fact is, they took the loan from there and built the vault deal down on the, uh, what do you call it? The, on the Delpho, Delpho? Perky. They took all the loan from there, halted down there a bit, but then it came from there. The town of Littleton in turn can still have access to getting that. Uh, around your communities are all invested into land for having people being able to walk or do something on it too. But my own personal opinion is I don't think that the town should be selling this piece of property whatsoever. I analyze it based upon, I'll give you an example. When the people of the water on Micro Property in turn in two thousand and nineteen oh five bought a lot of things about and invested into the water system that the community has. That's a great thing that was fifty thousand dollars at that time. And it's served that community very well out of the town. If you go back in and we retain this land, it should be retained, not for my generation and not some of the others. But if this property should be retained, it shouldn't be sold whatsoever. Down the road, it could be used for, uh, I, it's got the most perfect, okay, it's got nice views. But consequently, it also could, could put in for a, uh, what do you call it? Solar power. Uh, it's got the right area from that which would reduce the community's electricity in the future down the road.
Bruce, these are all excellent ideas. We just want to make sure, there's an awful lot of people here in the room tonight. Want to make sure that we give others that want to share some space. We're, what we're saying is, well, we'll decide as far as putting the brakes on or, we appreciate all the information, but there may be others within.
I don't disagree from that. I'm just saying I still do not believe that we should be disposing of this property whatsoever.
Okay.
The community should be.
No, we, we, we definitely hear your, your, your thoughts and opinions on that and thank you for that.
I'm going to speak that way as much as I speak this way because I can't hear down here and I'm sure you can hear down there. I'm Tom Al and I want to speak briefly, not full words. But I want to speak from the point of view first, I'm the chairman of the Conservation Commission. I have been for a long time. And I have to, uh, make an admission here, my good friend Frank, or I'm the one that called him out at the school meeting. Because, uh, as the school has been trying to come up with a plan for middle school and so forth, increase the land. At one point, the Eaton property was identified as a possibility. And, uh, from that aspect, I wanted to make sure the Eaton property got addressed before the school department started going off in other directions because we already owned that piece of land. And I also felt that since the town had owned the land for some period of time, it was time to give it a direction to go there. Not necessarily to sell it for commercial uses, but at least to give it a direction that it could proceed with. So speaking from the Conservation Commission point of view, of course, probably you know I don't want it developed. I don't want a lot of extra infrastructure. I don't want a lot of extra rooftops and asphalt driveways. It's going to push everything down with the houses downstream and it's going to require extra snow pile operators and more chimneys coming up and everything else. I don't want that. The Conservation Commission has been looking for a long time with a wish list for a town forest. And if you go around and look at all the other towns in the area, look at Lisbon, with Whitefield, with the Lancaster, with the Sugar Hill, with the Franconia. All those towns put a value on open space to the point where they have set up a town forest. Town Littleton, I love it, I was born here, I came back here. Seems to put a lot of value on what comes out of the back of an asphalt truck. And not so much on preserving some open space. If you look at what's left in that area, Town Axol, you see one green space zone. We pushed into it from Mans Hill with Wycombe Woods and with the new housing down below Wycombe Woods. We come up around Bishop Street, pushed into it. It's the only piece that's left. It's a hundred and three acres. It'll be a good spot for a town forest, which would give every citizen in town rightful access to go onto that for hiking trails, ski trails, that type of thing. Stephanie, let me step back now, I've spoken as the Conservation Hand. Let me just give you a little bit of a story. Stephanie and I, close, close, family friends. She was older than me, like an older sister. Grew up with Stephanie. When I came back to town, I helped Stephanie on a lot of her projects. I was there when she was trying to decide to sell the property. She wanted to do something for the town. Now, if you knew Stephanie at all, you knew she didn't necessarily get along with the town offices very often. But she loved the town, she wanted to do something for the town. In nineteen ninety-five, she could have sold that land to a bidder that would develop it. No problem she could have done that, but she did not want to do that. So she was happy with the wording in the warrant out there. It said, will you, the citizens of Littleton that are voting today, vote for the town to purchase this land for recreation purposes and other municipal uses? Now, I understand not much about lawyer speak, but I'm sure that lawyer speak can look at that municipal uses phrase and figure out a way to spin it to develop. But I got a phrase on my desk that says, you shouldn't have to look in the fine print to know what's right and what's wrong. Stephanie would not be happy with the idea that this thing is going to get built up in another development area. She would like to know that it's going to remain open space and she wanted, she was happy when they said the school might want it because again, that was a kind of a common community use. But today Stephanie is in a rest home down in Meredith, New Hampshire. She can't make these decisions herself anymore, she's under state care. At one point, I was Stephanie's power attorney, so how close can you get to understand what somebody was thinking and what they wanted? Again, legally, when she wrote the deed to the town, probably a warning to all of us, she put no restrictions in the deed as far as what it used to be. So from that point of view, it's open season. But it was purchased on a vote of Littleton citizens who believed when they read recreational purposes and municipal uses, that it would be used for the type of thing that Stephanie had in mind. And at the very least, if it got purchased by the town through a warrant article, if it has to get sold, it should get sold by the town through a warrant article. And just as easily, that warrant article could be voted down. And at the same time, not to let any cats out of the bag because I just thought of this as a sitting here, but what's to keep there from being a warrant article by another group? I'm sure to get the signatures. I know why this crowd is here tonight, it's not to support building up, buildings on Eaton property. It could be a warrant article for the town to vote to make the Eaton property a town forest.
Thank you, Tom.
Um, I agree with everything, I, I agree with everything Tom said. I knew Stephanie well as well, um, and I don't disagree with anything he said. I'm a little confused though. We were asked to review RFPs for a development proposal that the selectmen put out to bid. Where, what, what, what will be doing? Apparently there isn't even consensus, because the brakes trying to be drawn now, there apparently isn't even consensus that they want it developed at all, which again, I don't disagree with, with anything Tom said. I'm not sure I'm in favor of developing that at all. I was simply asked to, to evaluate proposals. Why did the selectmen approve putting a, a, a purchase and development RFP out? Why'd the selectmen approve putting a, a, a purchase and development RFP out if you hadn't even decided that's what you wanted to do?
At the last meeting, and unfortunately, I wasn't there.
I think it had more to do with the timing, so if we were gonna put something on a warrant article, I wanted to, you know, make sure we had time to get a proposal back, be with, make recommendations and get ready for a warrant article if that was going to happen because the market is so hard right now. Um, and then of course it allows for discussion like this.
Okay, so you're expecting then between now and the time of a warrant article to be able to, number one, determine whether you want to develop it, and number two, negotiate far enough to be able to establish what you want to do going forward? I don't know, I think that, I, 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 you know, the, the idea that, I understand why you want to put the brakes on, I, I, I really honestly do. I'm just trying to understand how the hell we get here? Because I, 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 I'm embarrassed frankly, I'm embarrassed sitting here because it's sounding like I'm supporting a plan that I was simply asked to evaluate three things. And there was only one that was responsive, made the job pretty easy. I, I'm, I don't understand.
I, I, I think that you, I think that you people were approached by the town manager. And you people in turn reacted to what the town manager gave you. And I think the town manager is the guy that's behind this whole thing. And I think you people.
Well, what's wrong with that? There's not, the town manager.
Yeah, he's doing his job if he wants to do it from that end, but I think that that's where it came from, stimulated from that. But I don't know that that's the correct manner, and I think it's what you're doing is asking for it and looking at it, but I think it's, you're looking into it deeper, and I think that's what you should do. But I'm like, oh, you know, this is, you can retain it.
You know, in full transparency, when, um, and, and again, I'm only gonna speak for myself, because I was not at the meeting that, and, and everybody has access to the meeting minutes, and I would encourage you to look, because it, yeah, I think it'd be very important for you to read the meeting, meeting minutes, um, out as of November twenty-third. I was not here. I saw the RFP, I was extremely concerned about how aggressive it was. And I expressed my concern, but because I was not here that night, I could not weigh in. But I did weigh in ahead of time. And I said, "Given two weeks, considering what is asked of and required," and we hadn't even had a chance to vet any of it out, um, I think that we ought to hold off on this. Now, I'm out of the picture, um, Monday night, and Chad and Roger, um, and if you read the minutes, you'll see that they had a lot of questions and were concerned about it as well, as well. And what we're told, that the developers might drop out due to the time delay and setup financing, and they both, um, Chad and Roger, um, asked questions about that. And we're told that you can always put the brakes on, you get the RFP out there, but we can, the break, or retract. So that's what they were going based on, that we put it in there that we can retract.
And it's stated in the RFP that we can.
Several, several times.
Several times.
So that we can, but, and Franco, I apologize, on behalf of this, I can understand why you would feel the way you are. We didn't even know that an advisory board was being put together. We had no idea.
Until today.
Until today, and then we got the information today. So, it, this is all coming just too fast, and, and we are, I don't know, I, I can't, I mean, I, I guess I would need to, we want to hear, obviously, from others, but.
Well, a couple of things, I'm really glad everyone's here and wants to talk about it, because I think that's what we were wondering about as well. Um, we, we also have a lot of questions, and said, there's a lot of things to think about, no matter which way you go. And we all, the, the group, we won't even say it was a committee, because it was just boom, 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 and we weren't appointed by the select board, so I, I would not say that we were a committee. We just were asked to review those proposals. As a member of the budget committee, I also asked the school board the other night, when they were presenting to the budget committee, um, they had a plan or a desire to bring a warrant article forward, and I'm not sure they're going to, but it's being considered, um, to ask the town for money so they can investigate different sites for a school and come up with specific plans, so you know more. So I asked, what were those locations? What were the, the locations, because I kind of knew that this might be, this topic might be coming up, and I did not want to close the door on them if they were still considering that site for a school location. And they all said that they were not considering the Eaton property. So I just want to let you guys know that part. So, I, you were making sure that that door wasn't closed by asking that question. And I am just really thrilled that there are all these people here wanting to decide what to do with the Eaton property. It's really just been sitting there, and it's a beautiful piece of property, it can be developed whichever way the townspeople want, but we have to start that dialogue. And as much as we tripped into it, um, at least it got people out and thinking about it a lot of the time.
Hold on a second.
Yeah, so it seems like we have conservation before we have, just go on towards the conservation board, and let, and let other people buy it, if you want the money, and, and then those people can give it to the Conservation Commission, or something like that.
Yeah, a good thought, I mean, there's a lot of really good ide, good ideas.
Yeah, I guess I suggest.
I just maybe want it just to be all these sudden developers, and, and nothing between drivers or the town hall, but there's gotta be something in between that the citizens can buy it and then let the town use it. Because I'm thinking there's a lot of people with money, they would like to see that money deserved, and the town needs money. We'll give you some money and help you now, and maybe.
Well, thank you, thank you for your input. Up there.
Hi, I'm Dave Harper, I'm a fellow of the past, maybe you can't tell, uh, but, uh, just wanna look, our property is very close to that, and, uh, I want to thank Bruce, because he's correct about the pest house property, so we could actually walk around our house up through the pest house property onto the Eaton verges. And, uh, you know, it's, I remember when we bought it, and way back when Parks Commission was in charge of it, and our mountain bike group asked for permission to make trails through there, and we did actually have some trails through there that were used for a few years, and then the logging, uh, kind of messed that all up. Uh, but there is a nice network of double track going through that old property, and it actually gets probably a lot more use than you think it does. Among it, us, a lot of people out walking their dogs, uh, hunters I've seen out there, uh, seeing cross country skiers out through there, snowshoes, so it actually does get a lot of property, and I think Tom's idea as a town forest is very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Dave. Anyone else? Good, Gardner, you're gonna have to speak up, unfortunately, because that's.
I should prepare remarks, and, and say, say, in nineteen ninety-five, the town of Littleton purchased it on its creative and municipal uses, and later through a possible school sale. There may not be a formal area that this park has created for recreation, however, there is no question that the property has been established use by the residents of Littleton, for example, space. Residential development by itself seldom generates a positive physical impact. Studies done by the cost of heating services, studies, organizational, examine both the tax revenue and straight rate of taxes, and its cost to local government to provide services. These studies, according to seventeen, shows that most residential development does not pay for itself, and they actually cost a dollar twenty-five to every dollar of heating taxes. They show that in most cases, conservation acts save local governments money, let alone the expenses they fall into the life of the town and the community. The town of Littleton should not miss the opportunity to keep the land for forty months and build a little piece. Citizen input by the high rock should be honored, and the pickings, including your development should be long. Open space maintains the world character that makes Littleton a appealing town much to live with. And I may add that Littleton may not equate this in raining without running Park and Pine Hill and the delts, and this is another piece of land that the town should deserve.
Thank you, Gardner, thank you. Anyone else, George?
Um, I, I'm George Metzall, I directly have bought the Eaton properties. As a matter of fact, this year I intend to burn the maple tree that fell and came down on my property. Um, so, I'm kind of interested in this, and I, I just have a question, so, or, or a couple of questions. So there's no, at this point, do you think that it's, or will you go ahead with the RFP for development?
We've got a lot discussing to do, George.
So, that's, that's not an imminent, uh, it's, I, I don't want to say threat, but that's not gonna happen this week. It's, there's a ways. Um, has any consideration been given to putting it under, um, conservance, conservation?
That's probably a point of discussion.
Okay, so that's, that's to come. And has, the other question is, has this been discussed before? Because, you know, I usually pay pretty good attention to what's going on, this is the first time I've really heard of anything going on, is that with the article in the newspapers this past week?
It's an, it's an aggressive thing, so, and we, we've just got a lot to discuss.
Well, we've discussed it on and off, so.
All right, but it hasn't, that's something that's come up, so the community would know a lot about what was going, or much about what was going on.
Well, then that's the transparency factor, and that's, that's exactly what we want. We want to be able to bring it forward, we want the comments, we want the thoughts. We don't want to feel like it's an island unto itself. We want the input, we want to be transparent.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
One of the things that I would like to say is, when the newspaper said that we authorized the sale of that, that floor, because we have.
We have, I have one. I was in the town office today, and I learned that the three select people in turn didn't have any authority, or weren't even asked about having Franco and anybody else on this committee. So you people all, all knew that a committee was formed, you didn't even have an opportunity of doing it, there wasn't anything you did. Back to it, it's the town manager in turn that asked them to go and do it. I don't know that it's right or wrong, but I don't think it's a fair thing that he goes over the heads of the select people, but he should have asked the people who sit on that board first. He should not say, well, the other people involved. I'm glad it's your argument, but I do think that it's the wrong way of doing it, it should have been, uh, through the select board, no matter what happens, it should, it had to be faced with this particular problem so quickly that I'm like, I'd say.
I, I, I appreciate that, I, I want to stress that none of us should have thought of this as a committee. I thought, I really honestly thought of this as a task, a sound board for something, I thought the selectmen were, well, the selectmen put the RFP out, so it was some sort of tacit approval to, for it, maybe not to the extent that it's going now, but, but it was not a committee. I don't think it's necessarily uncommon, I mean, when, when towns receive RFPs, they're, I'm, I'm sure that they rely on sound boards and advice from others anyways, on, on other things too. But I, I just, I was concerned right from the start about using the term committee when I was asked. All of a sudden we're talking about it, and then all of a sudden I was asked to come here and present, and I said, what am I, whom I present, whom I am behalf of? That's not what, you were a committee, that's not what my job was. So I don't, I want to make sure that's, that's clear.
It is. Thank you for your time, David, too.
Any other comments? I mean, there'll be, there'll be more discussions, and.
I mean, I, I think from tonight's, between tonight's, um, attendance and conversations and comments, and I know ones I've received over the past couple of weeks, I think about the only thing that's really clear is that we need to go to town meeting board and ask, "Do you want to develop this? Do you want to put it into a town forest, or leave this list?" I don't think that it's.
I'm ready to make a motion to put along the warrant article.
Well, what's, I mean, you can do that, but I'm just thinking maybe we need to have more conversations too, unless you want to make that motion.
Give me a minute.
Okay.
Charles would make a motion to give the warrant articles, you have to have the language worked out, and that's tough to do on the fly.
Well, I mean, we can make a motion, and, and put out the warrant article, what we want on it, and then, you know, obviously, like, before we create the warrant, say whether or not we want the warrant article.
At least we leave the sale or whatever to enhance the people, either we sell it or we keep it, and find a direction to go.
I just feel we need some more discussion, yeah, I, I really, truly do.
Good work.
I agree with Carrie, I think, um, to put it either way and make that commitment, look at more information. I mean, what would it entail to make it, put it in a town forest? You know, we, we need to know that information, um, do we want to sell it, do we not want to sell it? I think we probably need to have them form a committee and have input, and then don't even think about it this year, there's no rush. There's absolutely no rush to figure out.
Not a doubt.
I'll write it down.
Other thoughts and comments, I mean, we are not going to make any sort of decision tonight, um, but feel free to contact us as a select board, your thoughts, I mean, we, we are, we want to be open and honest with you too, so full transparency, um, this is our land, this is our, our decision as taxpayers.
I think what you see here tonight is a message.
Absolutely.
But we want to hear, actually hear more, definitely, Tom. Anything else, Brother Jeff?
So, a couple of things. On the list of houses that Bruce spoke of that were built probably over the last ten or twelve years, I think I probably built more than half of those and continued to build, you have several projects going. Now, my wife and I, Teresa also knew or knows Stephanie very well. We purchased other property from her. Prior to selling the land to the town, she subdivided three lots, and we bought two of them and sent subdivided, and we built, uh, three homes. We actually have view easements over the Eaton property, which, um, at some level affects, uh, value and ability to develop, I would think. To what Franco said, my, my RFP also included mixed use parks, recreation, and somehow, honoring Stephanie in the process, either name of a, a road or, uh, park. I think one of the things that's frustrating for myself, or a couple of things, one is, um, when I talked to Andrew, he, I talked to him on the twenty-fifth of November, the RFP went out the twenty-fourth, and he said that it was, um, something that the select board had agreed to, and that the RFPs, um, were being sought. So, it takes a fair amount of time to, uh, research and put an RFP together, and it kind of seems like it's no big deal to just drop a worm in the water and see if anybody nibbles without maybe respect for those who, um, have to put something together, and we're being asked to commit to something with the understanding that there's some reciprocation of commitment, and that doesn't, um, seem like it's happened. But I, I understand, uh, how that works as well, but I guess the other thing is, I think tradition. But I guess the other thing is, I think traditionally, uh, committees and projects overlook resources that we have right here in this town. And if it were to be developed, there's, um, income and potential for residents of the community, not just in increased tax base, but employment. So there are other, uh, things to consider in that. And, um, I'm not sure why we always have to go out of town, uh, when we're looking for something, um, to be built or a project or something here in town. We have a lot of resources, um, and not just myself. Frank's here tonight. There are other contractors that provide services and from the police station and other, other big projects, the money just goes out of town. And none of those contractors come back and contribute that I know of to, to the town. We're the ones that get the calls from parks and recreation and other committees for, for donations. And we're the ones that live here. We're the ones that love the town. We're the ones that, um, provide sustainability at some, at some level. So, um, I'm in a butter. My wife and I live there. As I look around the room, most of the folks here tonight are abutters. So it's not necessarily a, a good representation of how the whole town might feel. But as in a butter, I would be okay with it being a town forest. But if it were to be developed, I think area people should have a legitimate, sincere shot at being the ones that do develop it. We don't have to go out of town for everything.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, ma'am.
Other comments? We will revisit this.
Yes.
Yes. Okay. We're kind of going to go out of order. John, do you want to? John is going to be sharing. We're actually doing him his under public comments because I don't want him to have to sit much longer. But, um, John is going to be sharing tonight on the seller landfill traffic concerns. Given him about three, five minutes. All right?
Well, thank you for having me. My name's John Swan. I'm from Dalton. I'm also the crazy guy who is with Safe Forest Lake. It was a landfill development, uh, up to 1,900 acres of land uphill from the Amunucic River. Probably not a very good idea. And I'm encouraged to hear you folks out here tonight talking about conservation and protecting your natural resources. Look at what a beautiful one you have out here at the Amunucic. And I'm here because, um, out of concern relative to the, um, stage six expansion of the NCS landfill, uh, the Littleton Board of Selectmen weighed in in support of that expansion. And I have a feeling based on what I'm hearing tonight, that you probably weren't really given all the data you need to make that decision relative to your letter. Because I do have a letter and first off, it, it talks about, you know, how crazy pricing and everything's going to go relative to the closure of NCS and having to ship your waste up to Mount Carberry, which is an existing landfill, not a new one. It doesn't need to be built. Um, but there's no, there's no comparison relative to tipping fees. That's the basis for any cost analysis. It had to have. It just has a lot of nonsensical data in this letter that was sent to DDS and had an impact on the stage six approval, which is being challenged. And there's also a lawsuit relative to the federal Clean Water Act relative to possible contamination of the Amunucic. So Littleton does not need a second landfill impacting the Amunucic River. Y'all know where Chick's Sand and gravel is. That's where they want to put it. And the wetlands permit application states in there that 17 acres of wetlands are going to be dredged and filled, permanently impacted, damaged, destroyed in this process. So I'm here to, you know, just really ask the town of Littleton, what is the plan? I know traffic right now is being proposed to be rerouted through Whitefield up to 116, but let's be honest, the most direct highway access would be coming off of exit 42 and running those 100 garbage haulers bringing outstate waste through downtown Littleton. And that's what New Hampshire DOT is looking at and weighing. Do they route them 26 miles off of Trudeau Road and 93 through Whitefield impacting that town at the three corners? Or the simpler route is one, uh, Route 42, 302 to Chicks, five miles away. So I think the town of Littleton needs to look at, because you've known that NCS is going to be closing for some time now. It will be closing. So I'm asking the town of Littleton to please come up with a plan relative to your solid waste needs. Start talking to Mount Carberry because a landfill at Forest Lake is a nonstarter, folks. You talked about it tonight, the preservation of your resources. The Amunucic, that's the center of your grid district. A second landfill impacting that. Come on. So anyway, I'm just, again, I'm here to talk about, there's a lot of negative impacts that are happening with this development. And I think unfortunately with this letter sent to DDS, you kind of weighed in on the wrong side. It's like a Northern Pass fight and you sent a letter supporting EverSource. And we call this now, we're calling this, we're, we're borrowing from that great Northern Pass victory and we're saying, stop northern trash. We need to stop being the home for Massachusetts waste. Come on, this is, how many people live here? It's a small area. And you're going to have up to 49% of the waste being landfill on up to 1,900 acres of land is going to be from outstate. So please, you know, I would implore you to talk to your Board of Selectmen. We need to have a committee, a trash committee, to start looking at Mount Carberry as an alternative because we're going to do everything we can to stop this terrible development at Forest Lake. Look at who's Forest Lake, impacted burns, the Johns River in Whitefield. I mean, it's worth fighting for. I'd ask you, I'm with the group, Save Forest Lake. Who else have a website? Stop Northern Trash. And I would just ask you to, uh, to please start, pay attention to this because there's a lot at stake. So, um, I'll take any questions if you have any.
Do you have?
The letter that you're talking about, in no way could we endorse the Dalton Act?
Well, what you did is you extended the life of the NCS landfill to fit Casella's timeline, so it's taking segue into. So in essence, you, you pretty much threw the people of Bethlehem who have fought this landfill for years under the bus because you got bad information, which doesn't make sense and doesn't rhyme, doesn't rhyme with reason. Dalton made the switch in June to Mount Carberry. It's a further haul, that's correct. Cost more to haul. We've saved over $1,000 overall making that switch since June because of significantly lower tipping fees. $57 a ton for both MSW and construction. All you guys have to do in Littleton is, you have the infrastructure. This talks about infrastructure increases. You point the trucks instead of NCS, which is 10 miles away, up to Mount Carberry, which is outside of Berlin. I think I have it down to about 33 miles away. They talk about haulers going out of work, going out of, you know, losing their jobs. That's what they do, they haul, you know? This letter, if you want to see it, it's on the safeforestlake.com file page. I document everything, folks. And you need, you should really read the wetlands permit. Uh, information submitted by the Rome Amunucic River Local Advisory Committee against this landfill project because the impact to the Amunucic, the Alderbrook Wetlands complex, it's significant. Littleton and Whitefield, we're all in this together. It's going to be a development of regional impact. This could be a negative one.
Any other questions for, for John? John, thank you.
Sure. Thanks really. I'm off to a Dalton meeting where this is all we talk about. An invader coming in that's unmarked for an Amunucic landfill. God bless you, Littleton. We're on the same side in this fight.
Thank you, John.
Hey, John, how are you doing?
The, um, so the next thing, uh, a little lighter. Main street parking meters, um, we have to decide whether we want to cover them. And it would be December 21st to January 2nd, so basically free parking for that timeframe. Paul, do you want to add, um, add to that?
Uh, except that the community's done it for quite a few net years now. We just need the select board to authorize parking enforcement to bag the meters. There still is two, two hour limit, um, but it'll be free.
Okay. So I think last year Harvard Pilgrim sponsored it, so it kind of made up for, for the difference. One thing that I had thought of too is that could there be a sticker put on the back that said, "Thank you for your, um, enjoying two hours of free parking in Littleton"?
I think there is, can't remember what the bag said. Um, they might say two hour limit, but, um, we take that in. We, we tell people there's a two hour limit.
Okay.
Um, I think there's a lot of, uh...
Those bags.
Discretion. What's that?
The bags were given by some health insurance company.
No, that was the Harvard Pilgrim bags. This isn't Harvard Pilgrim. They paid, Harvard Pilgrim paid for the, for the bags to be placed last year. They were approached this year and they said because of the economy and COVID, they can't do it. Another, some other healthcare people were approached as well. We still could be negotiating, haven't heard back from them. Uh, if that's the case, it still falls under your vote, we would just put their paraphernalia on the, the meters instead of the tabs.
Do you, um, should we vote tonight then to authorize and then whatever you decide to do? Um, will you just go right?
I think, I think that would be appropriate that, you know, you vote to authorize meters to be bagged should a entity come forward wishing to sponsor, like Mr. Hadlock's talking about with Harvard Pilgrim. We'd like your approval to do that as well.
I'll make that motion.
Okay.
For December 21st to January 2nd.
Yes, two week period.
Yeah, I'll say.
Okay, all of you say aye?
Aye.
Good. Thank you. Do you want to sponsor Bruce? Hadlock Insurance?
No, I don't. First time I've heard of it.
Yeah, it's, it's actually a really, it's a neat thing. It's something to give back to the town, but it also gets the name out there. So, so meters. The other voter assessors, there's none. So under other business, we have the Littleton Off-Road Riders. And I'll have to defer to Roger on this.
Steve's here.
Steve.
Um, Houston's trail that closed as we had to be, oh, a couple of months ago when Eric came in and asked for permission to use the telephone, uh, the power line and he gave him permission, um, to use it pending, uh, that he got this signature as permissions from Littleton Industrial Park and Scott Manning and Greg Jessman and stuff that he had on it, whatever, and passed that pending that he had two weeks to bring the paperwork in. I had conversation yesterday with Greg Eastman and today with Scott Manning and Greg Jessman and neither one, none of them have signed or given any permission to him. Um, we, four days after that decision was made and the paper came out, we received phone call from Mrs. Alacqua that it closed the trail. Um, we've tried three different avenues to find re-roads and it's absolutely not going to happen. Um, we've lost a major that, 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 uh, all of those people said that they would agree with him to do it. Uh, he put together his proposal, brought it in, but in, in no way that it, if it had any expense or, or cost to the Littleton Off-Road Riders, um, that they wouldn't sign. Well, we lost the trail. We lost roaming and we've lost major means to the whole North Country Trail System. Um, and we did nothing throughout this except to make sure that we were careful when we did that. I've run out, we've run out of options to try and keep that open and going. Uh, he obviously didn't commit to the signatures and I guess where he didn't meet the stipulations that you said it not avoids, that what you passed to do that. So I was here to try and see that we could publicly make that known so that we could try to go back and, and appeal, uh, to try and keep that trail open until we can use the river again. But no, we just, we can't use it on rails until we have enough snow improvement and that doesn't seem to happen. So, um, I'm just here to appeal, um, to try and get that taken back to where it was and hopefully likely continue as it has been. On our part, we've never had any complaints, problems or anything until this came up, but now we're, we're up in the, in pretty good shape. So, um, I, I guess the appeal is really for nothing because it's, it is not avoided because he didn't meet the criteria. So I'm only asking for the public notice that it has been rescinded, pre-naked, clarified that it's not going to happen and maybe we can put positive activity up. That's, everything else is folded.
So if we go back in with those minutes, um, and bring those up, if you showed those landowners, the minutes to say that it was rescinded or rescinded, rescinded and become null and void, if he didn't provide signatures, do you think that would be good enough?
Oh, yeah. And any of us that you had any questions about, you know, because he makes statements that have not happened, has not fallen through. So if, if you had any doubts about what I'm conveying to you about what they said, they're waiting to hear from you and willing to answer your questions. Any, all of them. But they have not, he's not brought to them any proposal, any kind of language, any kind of paper to sign. And all of them had conversed together and agreed that if it was going to be at any expense, like I said, to the, to the Off-Road Riders, it wasn't happening.
I mean, it's, one of the things you look at is, you know, salt on this pretty good industry. And a lot of people will make a loop from here down around, you know, Warren, Lincoln, back up through the notch and come back to Littleton. And a lot of people from Littleton, uh, from Lakeland will make the trip up through Littleton and back down around. People from Warren will make the trip. There's some revenue that the town of Littleton is probably losing if that trail's not open. Because, you know, if, if it isn't, it's too far to go for a family for a day ride. I just...
Well, the other, the other thing too is that it was our avenue to get to, I mean, the weather and the snow would not, the east gate's not as active as it used to be, but the whole deal was that all the people on that end of town gave them access to get to the railroad track, sort of the, to the main trainings. So it wasn't just the travelers, but the locals. And, and we, it's never been rescinded, but we, we had a wide permission to go from exit 41 down to Cumberland Bonds for gas access and food and also to get to the east gate for them to be able to have trail access for snow vehicles, the game. And so it, it's the connection to the other side of town, you know? And it's, it's rescinded and it's all good, but we still like to go back to Mrs. Alacqua and appeal to her and to, to do whatever, but, you know, they just didn't want to wheel us on here in the, in the, you know, the erosion and all the things. And we often put up gates. Um, they didn't feel like living here in the North Country, that they should have to keep, get, put up gates, even though we are offering to pay for them to keep people off their property, you know, it's, but, um, so anyway, if this is done and we can, and things back to the way they are, hopefully we can put the thing back together for this winter and move forward. But as of now, he doesn't, uh, Mr. Rexford has no access off... But as we're now, he doesn't, Mr. Rexford has no access up from the railroad tracks to his property, either over the properties of the abutters or by using the road. So he has a piece of land that he can override and, and whoever, but he will not have the insurance benefits, you know? So I don't know liability-wise, but that's his own little, but his acre, that's his problem too. And hopefully we can save the trail system for the snowmobiles that, you know, are not , they're ground friendly.
So what do you, what do you need for us to do, Steve? Because if...
Just acknowledge the fact that it is, he's, you know, he didn't meet the...
I'd like to make a motion to rescind our vote giving permission to allow the wheelers on that property. I don't have that in law in front of me, though.
Should we look it up and get all the information in front of us before we go and do that? I think in the meantime, you know it's finished, well, we know it's not going to work, but I think to get that so that we have it documented, or...
The society interest, just the first meeting, not that.
Okay.
Made everything up.
So we're good?
All right.
So what, make a motion to reaffirm that requirements were not met, and therefore the voting mechanism?
Yeah, I'll second.
All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So it'll be in the minutes.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good luck getting there, Charlie.
Yeah. So that's all, I mean, other than opening it up?
Yeah, do you have the assessing contract on that?
We're not, we're not, yeah, I have not.
I haven't, no, because I just want to make sure.
Yeah, but that'll be taken and revisited. The only other thing left is just further public comments.
The young woman.
That's my daughter.
Oh, I see.
Roger, did you have anything?
No, I just, you've got me.
Well, hearing none, I raise up a motion to adjourn meeting.
I'll make a motion. I'm going to read second.